On record.
Call to order, the City of Lincoln City, City Council meeting of Monday, March 9th, 2020. Roll call, please.
Dick Anderson?
Yes.
Judy Casper?
Here.
Deanna Hinton?
Here.
Riley Hoagland?
Here.
Diane Kuz?
Present.
Rick Mark?
Here.
And Mitch Parsons?
Here.
Join me in pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for joining us tonight, and before we get too far into the agenda, I wanted to make note that to thank Council President Casper for taking over the last council meeting of February 24th. First thing I did when I, you know, got back in the country off the cruise ship, you know, with my alcohol rubs, was view that video to see what kind of damage you had done. And I do have to make a note that I was spellbound for a minute there when you all started talking about spending a million dollars on some kind of radio tower for Chief Palmer. You know, I got nervous about that, but I saw quickly your wisdom and finding a way to find some savings, and, you know, that was a nice move. So, President, Council President Casper, thank you for leading the charge.
You're welcome.
It went well. Thank you.
You do know we volunteered to pay for Newport's dam.
Oh, thanks. I didn't see that. That must have been after the mics went off.
Yeah, the mics went off.
All right. Well, we do have consent agenda tonight, consent agenda consisting of, number one, minutes of the joint work session with Planning Commission on October 29th, and the minutes of our regular meeting of January 27th.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would just like to say that I have sent to the city recorder just a few typos, but other than that, they were good.
Entertain a motion to approve with the typo corrections.
I'll move to accept the consent agenda.
With corrections?
With corrections, with Councilor Hinton's typo corrections.
Is there a second?
Second.
And we have a motion with a second to approve the consent agenda with typos. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed with a nay. Hearing none. Thank you. We have public comments at this time, and we have one person signed up, Lori Arce Torres. Are you available? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lori Arce Torres, Executive Director of the Lincoln City Chamber.
And I'm Lori Arnold, Board President of the Lincoln City Chamber of Commerce.
And we're here tonight for a couple of reasons. First, I just wanted to say that the Chamber is monitoring the coronavirus very carefully and sending out pertinent information when we get it, sending out things to our members that they need to know, such as BOLI sick pay requirements and OSHA occupational exposure requirements. So we'll keep monitoring that and send any updates out. The other thing that we wanted to talk about tonight is the Antique and Collectible Week that happened February 8th through the 17th, just a couple of weeks ago. So the Antique and Collectible Week has looked a lot of different ways in the past, but next year, we will be celebrating a big 30th anniversary. So it's been around for 30 years. One thing we know for sure is by having the Antique and Collectible Week the same week every year, it's built a following, and it brings a lot of visitors into Lincoln City during the off-season. 2019 alone Antique and Collectible Week brought in approximately 10,000 people, resulting in roughly $800,000 being spent locally in our shops and restaurants, and hotels reported a 10% increase in business during the midweek, which is due to the Antique and Collectible Week. They come and they spend the entire week. So the Lincoln City Chamber has partnered for the last few years with Antique Week Committee, which is led by Lori Arnold of Granite Attic, and we will be applying for the legacy funds to support this week-long tradition. We don't have the ability to raise funds, so we need additional funding to offset the costs of bringing in these events and putting them on. So it's not hard to figure out that we see much better results by collaborating our efforts. This year Antique Week was kicked off by the Chamber Super Auction, and by combining the events, it gives us the ability to highlight all of our activities in our marketing and advertising efforts. It also gave us the ability to raise over $17,000, which is critical to the Chamber's bottom line, and thank you to all of you who supported the Chamber Auction. I know Mr. Dick Anderson has a very nice watch that came from the Super Auction. Not tonight, what? So during this time, the Chamber has had over 20,000 people visit the Chamber website, and they searched for a lot of different things, but they were also searching for the Super Auction and Antique Week information. So we had 25,000 views to our Chamber social media pages, and we were able to post pictures and thank our donors for their generous donations, giving them added exposure.
And Antique and Collectible Week has a very active Facebook page. We post every day. We had over 30,000 views in one month this year, and in combining our efforts, we were able to reach well over 50,000 people. And at the last minute, we had a scavenger hunt. The casino was nice enough to offer us a wonderful weekend package, and we accomplished that in five days by handing out maps requiring participants to visit each location, get the map stamped, and then turn it in for a chance to win a weekend at Chinook Winds Casino Resort valued at $1,000. The antique dealers reported that this brought a lot of people through their doors. One store in particular said they saw a $7,000 increase. Next year, we'd like to celebrate the 30th anniversary in a big way. We are hoping to bring back some of the most successful events we've done in the past, such as the Appraisers' Bond, Storytelling of the History of Lincoln City, vendor pop-up booths, which could include a Hawaiian pearl vendor that we found to highlight and celebrate the Pearls of Lincoln City, which is the jewel for the 30th anniversary. And we will need additional funds to do these types of events, because they're rather spendy, but the draw is very large. Given the fact that next year is the 30th anniversary, we hope to make it bigger and better than ever before. By organizing and collaborating our efforts, we will continue to grow attendance and highlight the rich history of Lincoln City. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Great. Very well. I appreciate it, because I did attend a lot of those events and went through some of the stories as well, so thank you and thanks. I'm curious, who won the package?
A lady from Washington.
Good. Out of town, so brings her back, huh?
Yes, and the year before last, someone from British Columbia won.
Okay. Those aren't rigged, are they, for always out-of-towners?
No, they're not.
Okay.
Not at the casino, no way.
And Lori, while you're here, do you want to tell us about your Friday, or Tuesday, the 31st?
Yes.
Take advantage of that opportunity?
Yes. Our next Chamber luncheon will be March 31st, Tuesday, at the Cultural Center, where we will have our very own Mayor Dick Anderson giving city updates.
Not the state of the city.
Not the state of the city, but city updates.
Right.
So yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hope to see everybody there.
Any questions from Council? Thank you both.
All right.
Nice job. Thanks for the report. Anybody else who didn't get the opportunity to sign up, want to come forward and make a comment? Seeing none, we'll then move on. We have ordinances. Ordinance 2020-07.
Your Honor, Council, this is first reading of ordinance 2020-07, an ordinance of the City of Lincoln City amending ordinance 2019-42, providing full property description for the vacation of a portion of Northwest 44th Place. Ask for approval of first reading. Essentially, the tax assessor asked that we put a fuller legal description. Basically, it wasn't in Exhibit A. Exhibit A was the map, and so this rectifies that.
It's still moved?
Second, we have a motion for first reading by Councilor Hoagland, and second by Councilor Parsons. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Your Honor, Council, this is second reading of ordinance 2020-07, an ordinance of the City of Lincoln City amending ordinance 2019-42, providing full property description for the vacation of a portion of Northwest 44th Place. Ask for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve second reading and adopt ordinance 2020-07.
Second.
We have a motion to approve with a second from Councilor Hoagland. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
And Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you very much. Moving to special order of business, we have first on the order choosing the new park name for our new park on Southeast 3rd and Keel.
Hello, City Council and Mayor. I'm Jeannie Sprague, Lincoln City Parks and Recreation Director.
And I'm David Jamison, Parks Board Chair. I have a statement to read. In September 2019, Lincoln City Parks and Recreation held a public contest for naming our new park located at Southeast 3rd and Keel. Lincoln City Parks and Rec received 83 name entries. With keeping the name entries anonymous, the Lincoln City Parks and Rec Board narrowed the picks to six names. Parks and Recreation Director Jeannie Sprague and City Manager Ron Chandler agreed with the choices. Per policy, City Council makes the final decision. So ends my statement.
And the names are up there. You also have the description that each contestant wrote about the name.
And that was well done, and you'd actually given it to us in advance. We'd seen that, knew it was coming. I'd be curious if we could, there must be a recommendation from the Parks Committee? Did you, as a committee, come up with one of these six that you'd prefer?
I'd say that any of the six would reflect the character, nature, place for this new park.
This is a political year. I understand that. The question, the question, Mr. Chair, was, one, you know, what's your recommendation?
There were certain names that received more votes than others. Again, I think any of these names would be a great choice for this particular park. The two that received the most votes were Naseika Park. Naseika Park is from the Chinook language, meaning "our place," we, us, ours.
And David, we heard from the Confederate tribes of the Sleets Indians today, it actually means "ours" instead of "our place," just found that out today, and it's Naseika.
Naseika.
Yes.
Okay. And it would be a good learning experience for everyone, too. And then Osprey Park was the second most popular from the Parks Board. And of course, the reason for that is, that name is, there was an Osprey pair that was nesting at the mall, but apparently, the structure they were nesting on couldn't support their nest, so they had to relocate, you know how tough it can be to be find housing here in Lincoln City? They were able to find a site that's directly adjacent to the park, across Southeast 3rd in the wetland, on top of a tall tree, so that Osprey Park seemed quite appropriate.
Great. Well, that's helping, helps us, you know, narrow things down. So, Director Sprague, I would ask you the same question, you know, as staff from Parks and Rec, do you have a recommendation?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with those two recommendations that Chair said, Naseika and Osprey.
You're not going to narrow it down further for us?
No way, no way.
Okay.
Those are my top two.
I think one of the questions, Councilor Hoagland had raised the question before about any kind of a name from the Sleets tribal language, sensitive to using their language without their in-depth approval. Has any of that been accomplished?
It has been. So I heard from General Manager Brenda Bremner today. She spoke with the Tribal Council members and Cultural Director Robert Kenta regarding our inquiry. They don't have any issue with the name, other than making sure the translation is correct, Naseika, and also that it's pronounced correctly, Naseika, and also the translation is "ours" instead of "our place."
Great, thank you. So, is it your desire that we quickly give you an answer, right now?
That'd be great, if you all can come to consensus.
So, Council, 6, 83 went down to 6, you know, potentially went down to 2.
We only have one to go.
What say you?
I'd like to make a motion to make, to name the park Naseika.
I second that.
Okay, there's a motion on the table to name, I picked it, Naseika?
Yes.
Is that Naseika? Is the name of the park? Discussion. Had we not limited to, I mean, these two, I was just commenting, it brings it down, but there's other ones, but, Councilor Mark?
Thank you. I had the same concern about, I'm, thank you for contacting the tribe and getting that approval. I was worried about that. I did Google the word Naseika, and the thing that came up at the top of Google is that it's the brand name of a firearms manufacturer. They have to only make rifles, so that gave me a little pause, but maybe in light of this reaction from the Sleets, and I'm thinking that's less of a problem. But can I just say, I myself was leaning toward Osprey, if only because I had two constituents voice their preference for that. So that's probably would be in my vote right now.
Council, I-
When you defined Naseika, and it was just "ours," is there a term or word for parks or that type of gathering place from the tribe that we could better define it so there's no confusion with what Councilor Mark was mentioning?
I can always ask, yes.
Instead of it just being "our," which doesn't define what it is?
It's a park, though.
I know, I know, but you know, every, I know. So if we add the word "park" behind it, is that an issue for them? Or was that the question that you asked?
They were all something, Park, Osprey Park, Naseika Park. They all had the "Park" after.
That's a good point, yes. It says Naseika Park, yeah.
Yeah, I would also think that they would have a term or something for gathering place or something.
I could ask.
I don't know. I don't know.
Well, I don't know about asking.
Okay.
So, you know, we got the deals on the table here now, so now is, we're making the decision. So, the motion is, would be as stated up there, and we have the appropriate approvals that satisfy.
We just need a sign that says "no firearms."
That isn't our park ordinances, so we're good.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? Yes?
Is there, like in the English language, it's, you know, "I" before "E" except after "C." I myself, I'm afraid I might confuse the name and pronounce it wrong. I mean, I heard two variations right here. I too have been contacted by a couple of community members who like Osprey Park because of the fact that the birds are there, and so that was the input that I got. But I was concerned about making sure that we continuously are consistent about the name. I wouldn't want to butcher the native tongue. I'd need training, I think.
And that's what I was going to say, if it does become Naseika.
Do you have a mic down there?
I do.
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Okay, I was thinking if we do use Naseika, if that gets it, if we could put how to pronounce it correctly. I think that's the hard part. And just so you know, on Osprey, back in the day, they were Ricky and Lucy. Just so you know, we named them Ricky and Lucy way back when. We watched them grow and have their babies. Pardon me?
Well, you-
No, they had to move.
I hope, you know, if enough of you don't want one name but want the other, it's a, you vote "no" without fear of, so, you know, if you, that's how things work. All right, so there's a motion on the table. Although, or, do you want a roll call, or how would you like it, Judy? Uh, Judy, Kathy?
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Mark?
No.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
No.
Motion passes.
Great. So I think if you could just get maybe a pronunciation as well, to help folks would be helpful there. That would be great.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Council. We have, next item is a Design Build Contract Award for Highway 101, Nyatu Bike Ped Improvements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, tonight, we are asking for the Council to approve the award of Progressive Design Build Services for a Highway 101 project. This is one that we've had, we were given a grant from the State Transportation Improvement Program. This is to construct a bike and pedestrian facilities from roughly Nyatu Drive, a little bit south, to West Devils Lake Boulevard and Road Intersection. Also improve that intersection and put a boardwalk along the east side of the highway there, through the wetlands. So it's a really important project for us. We've been working on it quite a while. The total amount is $3 million. So rather than design it, bid it, build it, we went with, you guys approved us, to do an alternative contracting method, where we select the teams, these teams are the contractor and the engineer together. So we went out for an RFP, we received five proposals, which is a healthy number. Lot of buzz out there right now with the contracting community on progressive design build. Can be very advantageous. So we interviewed, we, it says there was five people on the selection committee. One of them was from ODOT, and one of them was from the Confederate tribes of the Sleets. They are also partners with us, with the grant. The tribe has pledged $360,000. The city's contribution is $130,000, and the state's with the balance of that. So with our selection committee, we whittled it down to three top ones from the five proposals, and we interviewed three. Those interviews went really well. Again, it's a very, I have a good feeling about this project. We've got, I think everything's lined up to make it really something fantastic for our community. We did select our preferred contractor team, KNE Excavating, and that was a unanimous decision by the selection committee. So with that, unless you have any questions about the project at all, we would move to, would ask you to move to award the contract to KNE Excavating.
Questions? Council?
Hello, Stephanie? The only question I have, and I know this is design build, so it probably doesn't plan to this, but is there a contingency for the construction part, or do they just, whatever?
There will be a contingency, but it's not our traditional contingency. What will happen is, the design team will get together with the kickoff, and will come up with some alternatives. And during the initial early design process, since the contractor's on board, the engineer's on board, we can start looking at each of those alternatives and what those costs are. So we start, so we're committed to end with $3 million, our total amount, $3,51,500. So the contingency will be built into that, you know, things that are unknown during the project. But at the end of the day, that will be the amount of the project. And so we're, that's the nice thing about this process, is there's a lot of certainty throughout, but especially when you get, you'll get, we'll get a not-to-exceed cost, and yeah. We'll get a not-to-exceed cost at 60%.
I might point out that this project actually was funded and approved back in 2013.
13, yeah.
Just to give you an example of time lags, but you see the $3 million and how much came from the state, and that's why it is real important, again, to participate with meetings with the state and ODOT. And this project, quite frankly, was put together knowingly that it was going to be expensive, but with the three parties being the partners, having the tribe, having the city, and having the state participate, moved it up on the appeal list as well. But this, I guess I just can't impress enough of us as councilors, but also the public of how long and how far in advance we have to be thinking about projects to get in line for funding, state funding. Because this was awarded in, or approved in 2013, but we had to wait for now for the actual funding to come into place. It's crazy how far you have to, and unfortunately, we have to use estimates of costs back from 2013, so we know we get behind the eight ball, and that even makes it hard. But just to give you a little flavor of, nothing comes easy. But the whole idea was, again, to move people off 101, and I think this is going to be a creative, because of the wetland, you've got then a high bank going up along the south side of 101. It's, this is clearly the right way to do it with the design build. Other questions, concerns? Entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I will move to award the Progressive Design Build Services for the Highway 101, road bike pedestrian project from Nyatu Drive to West Devils Lake Road, to KNE Excavating Incorporated.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Councilor Mark, and second by Parsons. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
And Hinton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. All right, we have Arbor Day proclamation proposal.
Mayor and City Council, Lincoln City is, I'm Jeannie Sprague, Parks and Recreation Director. Lincoln City is a designated Tree City USA. This is an honor bestowed on us for our love of trees in our city and our public spaces. The Oregon Department of Forestry oversees the Tree City USA program, and they have four mandatory standards for a city to be a Tree City. One of them is for the mayor to proclaim an Arbor Day within the city. Lincoln City has been a designated Tree City USA for 12 years. Lincoln City has been a designated Tree City USA for 12 years. Um, we hope to go for 13 here. And Mayor Lincoln City Parks and Recreation will be hosting an Arbor Day event on Saturday, April 18th, at Regatta Park. So, we hope the mayor will designate with the city council with the attached proclamation. And you'll see the-
That's the proclamation right there?
Do you want that?
So I could even read it?
Yes, please.
And I'll do that?
Thank you.
This is the Tree City USA 2020 Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas Lincoln City celebrates Arbor Day every year to honor the important role trees play in our daily lives and to maintain our Tree City USA status 12 years and counting. And whereas Lincoln City residents have demonstrated their extraordinary support of trees in many ways, including a $3 million bond issued passed in 1998 for the purpose of preserving forests and other sensitive lands within the city limits, and efforts in the past eight years to improve forest health in the city's open spaces. And whereas, on this Arbor Day, the city celebrates renewed efforts in our parks and open spaces to educate the public on the importance of trees by offering naturalist-led hikes and interpretive signage, along with two successful thinning projects in Agnes Creek Open Space, conducted in 2013 and 2014, the completion of the spyglass thinning project in 2016, and the planting of the spyglass trees and trebs in 2017, and the current selection thinning of Southeast Third and Keel Park. Whereas, Lincoln City continues to improve the ecological health of the forests in the city's open spaces throughout the removal of invasive species, restoration of native vegetation and tree planting, with the successful partnerships of many local nonprofits and volunteers. This raises public awareness and opportunities for passive recreation through trail creation and maintenance. Now, therefore, I, Dick Anderson, Mayor, do hereby proclaim the date of April 18th, 2020, as the Arbor Day 2020 in the city of Lincoln City, and invite all citizens to join in its celebration in the city's efforts to support healthy trees, forest ecology, for the well-being of this and future generations. Dated this ninth day of March, 2020.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing it forward. And isn't there a resolution there as well? Was this?
A motion to approve it?
So, how about if, uh, a motion to approve this proclamation?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move to approve the pro- the proclamation establishing 4/18/20 as Arbor Day 2020 for Lincoln City to celebrate trees and continue our Tree City USA designation.
Second.
And we have a second for Counselor Hinton? Motion to approve with a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed with a nay? Hearing none? Thank you very much. We have mural art in parks, public art donation.
Parks meeting.
Hello, City Council and Mayor. I'm Jeannie Sprague, Parks and Recreation Director. I'm here in support of the next two presentations of local artists, um, asking to place art in our public spaces and parks.
Good evening again. I'm David Jamison, Parks Board Chair, and I have another statement to read. In the fall of 2019, Crystal Akins, founder of Oregon Children's Music Festival and Director of Community Arts Project, approached the Lincoln City Parks and Recreation Department about hosting a community mural project in Lincoln City. This project includes working with local and diverse artists to collaborate with community members in painting street murals in four of our public parks or public spaces. Following the guidelines of the 2018 Public Arts Plan and the Lincoln City Parks and Recreation System Plan, Crystal presented her ideas to both the Public Arts Committee and the Lincoln City Parks and Recreation Board on February 19th of this year to gain our approval. We all approved and made a recommendation to Lincoln City Parks and Recreation Director and City Manager, who also approved. The final step in this process is city council approval. That ends my statement.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question for clarification?
Counselor Casper, you had a question for, of whom?
Uh, I guess Jeannie.
Jeannie?
It talks about, um, the places for these murals, and one is southwest 34th Street Beach Access. Do you mean 33rd or 35th? There is no 34th. 33rd. Okay, thank you.
To the north of the, the Sand Castle?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Hi, so I'm starting with slide one.
Okay.
So, um, I'm presenting to you the community mural project, and now I'm moving to slide two.
Can I interrupt you, and could you introduce yourself first?
Oh, yeah. I'm, I'm Crystal Akins. So, the community partners are Lincoln City Parks and Recreation, I'm on slide two, um, Activate Arts, which is a nonprofit that-
Oh, okay.
That I'm with, uh, Oceana Family Literacy, Oregon Children's Music Festival, and Or- Oregon Community Foundation, Oregon Humanities, and, um, and myself as an artist. So, I'm moving to slide three. So, I'm proposing that we do four community street murals, and you can see some examples I gave. These are murals that are in Portland currently. Uh, slide four, benefits of the street murals, they're accessible. I was thinking about liability and safety, 'cause this includes all community, and we wanna get a lot of the children involved, so I don't wanna get kids up on cherry pickers. So, really thinking out what, how can everyone be a part of this and access them, so putting the art on the ground. Also, this is, street art, this would be the first on the Oregon coast, would be Lincoln City, to debut street art on the ground. And again, it's inclusive and it brings community together. So, the first mural I'm proposing goes on 50, 51st Street, um, at the beach access there. Um, the theme would be Grandmother Agnes. She recently passed away. She's from the Celets Tribe. Um, I've been in communication with her family for about two months, and it had, I have the approval of, of the family and the daughters. Um, the artist that we would be working with would be Toma Villa, and, um, I was gonna pull him up here, but it's not working, but he's a very well-known Oregon Native American artist. She's brought back the salmon blessings. Uh, she also graduated from Lincoln City High School. There's a lot of history about her that people are not aware of, and this would be bringing people together. The murals would also be partnered at their opening with music and dance to open each one. So, already, um, members from the Celets Tribe have agreed to have drumming and dancers in their regalia. So, this, it's about, um, education too, and, again, bringing people together. Okay, the second mural, um, our artist is Brian. He owns the surf shop, and he's, you know, Zug Life. And this is, he, his mural, this is what he presented to me, and, um, it would be, this, this type of black outline style is really great for, again, all people to be involved. I'm at slide seven. So, this mural would be by The Plaza by Bob's Books. Um, Miles Brown is an artist from Oregon. He's a, uh, teaches at Malhuamee Community College. He's been featured, um, as an artist in different galleries, um, lots of great publicity. You can see his work there. Hey, the fourth mural would be at Regatta Park, and, um, I would be the artist that's creating the mural. So, it's, again, bringing even more attention to the musical instrument park. It would be right on that cement slab, right in the middle there. It'd be music-themed. Uh, the kids from Oregon Children's Music Festival camp, as you can see them here, we would co-create this together. Um, and it just, um, creates more of a relationship with, with the park and the festival. It's just taking it to the next step. Uh, slide nine, these are how artists are chosen. So, I'm looking for local artists, artists of color. So, Brian is a local artist. I am an artist of color. Um, so is Miles and Toma Villa. Um, artists who can educate and collaborate with community. Sometimes being an artist is kind of an, it's an individual act. You make art alone, and then you share it. These artists, they're gonna come and do presentations, talk about what it's like to be an artist, really engage the community and the children. So, there'll be, there'll be talks. Um, so all of these artists, they've either worked in schools, or they've done workshops, they've facilitated conversations about art. Um, they're, they're community artists. The murals are funded by private donors and grants. Um, each mural is worth $7,000. Slide 11, the care and the maintenance. So, that's going to be done, um, in partnership with Activate Arts, the organization I'm with, Lincoln City Parks and Recreations. The street mural's lifespan is about 10 to 15 years without maintenance. But the maintenance plan is to look at these, I'll assess the murals yearly and then, um, repair them as needed. Slide 12, so how the murals are created. Um, I need a four-day permit. We start with power washing. Artists lay down a grid. Artists meet with the community members, and we start painting together. Uh, mural dry time and cleanup, um, is, is one day. It's more than that, but I like to expand time to make sure that, um, everything gets done. Uh, slide 13, so the next steps are, I'm here right now, presenting to you to get approval. Arts committee makes suggestions, um, talk about concepts. In June, the mural drafts would be approved by the arts committee, so nothing goes on the ground until the arts committee approves it. I want the murals to go up in August 2020, um, and I need approval by April 2020, if possible, because I need to make sure that I can commission these artists, they're well sought out, and to get those initial drafts to the arts committee, I need to pay them. Okay. 14, slide 14. So, the big vision is that there are murals across the central Oregon coast. I just wrote a grant, um, just that I'm looking to build 11 murals across the central Oregon coast, um, so 11 of them. Four of them would start here, and then working with, um, Travel Oregon on creating a brochure, um, that's, um, that highlights like a tour for murals on the central Oregon coast. So, um, it's a way of bringing people here and creating an artistic and cultural identity. And I wanna thank you for your time, and this slide was just to show you how it brings community together, and they're very joyful. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Questions from counsel? Yes?
Um, the surfaces of the mural, would there be some substance put on it so graffiti cannot disturb it?
Yeah, so it's actually house paint. We use house paint, and then there's, um, a varnish that we put on the top of it. So, I haven't done research about the graffiti with the varnish on top, so, um, I could do further research and report back on that. But I do know in Portland, the, the street murals, they're house paint with, uh, with a varnish on the top. And they're, and I could also bring this research too, but when there's art in a space, um, it's, it's vandalism rates actually decrease. So, but, yeah, that, that question I don't have a direct answer for, if, if it's graffiti-proof.
Other questions here? Counselor?
I'm a little curious about the approv-, I mean, these haven't been created yet, so, we're, you're, I trust your judgment on the artists, and then the arts committee is final say on, um, on what gets painted?
So, I'm Nikki.
Do I have any doubt about the wisdom of the arts committee? Just curious.
Well, I'm Nikki Price, and I'm head of the Public Arts Committee, and, uh, we were brought in on this process. Uh, at the last meeting, we had a joint meeting in which we went through this entire process. We've also shared our master plan, which has policy and guidelines with the Parks Committee, and it has certain guidelines about the accepting of, of these donations and the maintenance plan that's required thereafter. And, uh, we all felt pretty strongly that, that the way that this has been thought through really hits goals that we already have within our public art committee. In fact, um, one of them is, um, to create a, complete a smaller-scale participatory project that engages all, including youth and multicultural communities, and consider a well-qualified local artist to complete the project. So, we were pretty excited, because without even trying, we satisfied one of our goals, so. That's great.
That's pretty cool.
You're welcome. No, we're really, really thrilled to, to be associated with, with Crystal and the artists that she's gonna be bringing. It also touches upon, um, our need to have a lot of different kinds of communities, multicultural topics, um, accessibility to all, and so, I really don't see a lot of problems going forward with the approval of these murals.
Great.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd just like to say that this will be very fun. I think it's gonna just draw a lot of interest, and, and I've, um, seen others, and it just pulls you in, so, and I really like the, um, areas that you've selected to put these. I think it's kinda sprinkled throughout the city.
Thank you.
Good.
Nicely done.
Counselor Mark?
Just to be clear, so are the, are these all going to be horizontal, that people can walk on?
Yep, they're all on the ground. Yep.
They're all on, on concrete rather than road. That was something that I needed to be clarified when I saw it at first, because, uh, it's going to be in the park areas that are already paved with concrete.
Your Honor, um, just, it's something that I, I always try to bring up, is that, uh, artists typically, especially with public art, um, we typically request a waiver of the VARA rights, which is the Visual Artist Rights Act. It's a federal law. Um, that law comes along with certain, you know, uh, rights to prevent distortion, mutilation, modification of the, of the art, uh, work of art, and such that it would damage the artist's honor and reputation. We try to stay away from getting into arguments about that, so typically, when we accept a donation, we ask for a waiver of VARA rights.
Okay. So, that would be forthcoming, then?
Okay.
The, the question I had was more of a clarification. Um, I saw your, the donations for the creation comes from private donations and whatnot. I didn't understand the long-term maintenance. Is that, switches to Parks Department?
Yeah, so that's the partnership, so, um, yeah, Parks, and then alongside with Activate Arts, yeah.
Parks and what?
Activate Arts. That's who I'm with. It's a nonprofit that I'm with.
So, excuse me. I guess I'll, I just wanna make sure, so Jeannie knows she's gonna have to have a line item budget.
Yes, we will be starting this fiscal year, 2021, having a line item for public art in parks. Yeah. From what I understand and of working with Crystal, is that, uh, there's not much maintenance to these murals, that they can last 10 to 15 years. Um, is that correct, Crystal? Yeah. That there's not much maintenance to these art pieces, but we will have a line item. Does that help, Mayor?
Great, thank you. Great, thank you. Counselor Mark?
Sorry Nikki, I'm not sure I got a, maybe I missed it. I'm not sure I got an answer to my first question. So the, the, these artists are gonna present their, their concept or maybe a rough, you know, maybe an actual drawing of what is they're gonna do. Is, is the arts committee, somebody has to say yea or nay, you know, go with that or we like that or don't like it, or it's got, you know, something objectionable or whatever, you know? So is the arts committee the final word on that? And then it goes? So, okay. I don't know nothing about art, so.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
That's how it's written. So this is the first time that we've actually gone through this process. Not myself, the arts committee, and the policies that are set in place.
Other, other questions?
I just have one. I just, a request. Is when you, probably already have this on your schedule, but when you do have your ideas for, for the artist and for the artwork itself, could you bring it back to us so we can see it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
But just for information, right?
To see it.
Okay, not for a decision, just to share. Correct? Okay.
Counselor Mark, we also do have a, a listing of review criteria that we would judge it against. Should there be a question?
I guess I could always drop in on the arts committee meeting and watch.
Definitely.
And if I make faces, that means.
So what is the action needed then? A motion to accept?
It's a, it's a donation, so I move to accept subject to waiver of VARA rights. So I'll make that motion.
Okay. Oh, okay. A motion to accept a donation with the waiver of rights?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Counselor Hinton? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay? Hearing none? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good explanation. Thank you very much for sharing.
That'd be funny.
All right, we must have another.
David Jameson, again, Parks Board Chair. I don't have a statement to read this time, just a declaration that the process we went through to get to this point was the exact same process we went through for Crystal's mural art. End of non-statement.
Hello, my name is James Lukinich. I've been a professional chainsaw carver for over 20 years. And I would love to carve your stump. Used to be out there on, by the Spirit Mountain Casino. But me and the wife recently purchased a house here in Lincoln City. I go to the Nationals every year. It's held in Reedport, Oregon. They send 50 carvers from around the world. Last year we took fifth. I usually have my wife helping me. So that's a great honor. We usually place top 10. We've been going there since 2008 or '09. Pretty well-known artist. I went out and checked your stump out and it's, I'm just feeling a wilderness scene out there by Devil's Lake. I see bears. I like to carve some eagles. I'm pretty good at offsprays. So we can do just sort of a 3D beautiful carving out there. And then I preserve it. There's a little rot in that stump, so I have the gouger machines. I take that out. Once I'm done carving it, I preserve it. I oil it, then I varnish it. And then every couple of years, I'll come by, check it out. I don't charge for that. If somebody graffities, I just re-sand, re-carve. And I think it's just a beautiful canvas. It's, I have a $2 million insurance, so I'm totally covered. And that's about it.
Could you remind us and the, the public where the stump actually is?
It's out by the.
The pump station at the corner of West Devil's Lake and 101.
Yeah, it's probably a 10-foot stump, but probably 10-foot through, 8-foot. It's a, it's a big stump.
And when you carve such a stump, where, where's the frontal, front view of the actual?
Well, I like to do the frontal view when you're coming from the lake up to the 101. I do the, I do total 360.
Okay.
So then I've got up on the, on the highway there and I like to mount. I usually will bolt a couple of big eagles up on top so we can actually see it from 101. So I usually do the whole 360. And I, you know, and I put it in the contract that I'll definitely do a bear family, definitely do eagles. But as I'm carving, I usually will go, if I see a blue herring or something, I'll usually put that in there. I love putting elves up there hidden somewhere. And I work for the city of Willamina, Sheridan, did a big project for the city of Tigard. I do San Diego every year. Carlsbad, I've done a piece for Carls, the city of Carlsbad. And I just love to give back to our community. So the bid we gave, we came way under just for that reason. So, and I'm right here and I can start pretty much whenever. And I'm a retired Orboris, so 20 years tree climbing. And I'm pretty safe about how I approach carving that. We'll use scaffolds and I'll never run saws on a Sunday. That's sort of a quiet day. I don't, people don't wanna hear chainsaws running and, but I just like to carve it.
Questions from council?
Staff questions.
Yeah.
Welcome, by the way. Welcome to Lincoln City. First, thank you.
Oh, we love it. The wife finally talking to me and buying a house.
There you go. Well, that's always.
He's a retired flight attendant.
I just am curious, is this is going to be art? What we're planning to do with the parking there? I'm just looking on Google Maps and I see it's paved, but then what looks to be probably eight feet up would be the base of that tree. So in order to get there, we're building something that we want people to see without how, how to get to it, you know? So is there?
I think our vision was more that they would be seen as they're walking on the sidewalk or driving down the road.
What sidewalk?
There's a sidewalk next to the pump station there.
The one you just approved a minute ago.
Oh, that set way down below the pump sta?
It's pretty visible.
So it's right next to the stoplight on 101? Yeah. It's across from, what's that, Blue Herring Rental?
Yeah, 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 but that's certain, that's still 40 yards.
It's pretty visible from when you're driving up. It'll be a big, it'll be a big masterpiece, so. And then I add color, so.
And I wanted.
I saw the work and I, and it's wonderful. I'm just saying as far as people, are they going to be allowed to park at the pump station and walk? Are we gonna put a garbage can there? You know, what are we, the city, going to do to facilitate this viewing of this, really?
Right. There was no plan to put parking there or a garbage can. The vision was more of it being, well, it first came to our attention, the Parks and Recreation Board, when we had a community member come to us who lives off that road and said they saw that the tree had been taken down there and they wanted some art in its place. And so that's how the discussion got started. And then we happened to meet James coincidentally. The two conversations didn't link, but they ended up linking.
It's this tree right here.
So I think Counselor Hoagland, it was more of something that you can see from the road, that you can see from 101 actually, as you're driving south. You can actually see it. It's sticking up there. And definitely from West Devil's Lake Boulevard.
I think I'm pretty, it's the one, the, the big tree that was.
Yes.
That, that one, that's no longer there, right? I mean.
Or the option is we could take it completely down, but the idea of chainsaw art came up.
I just see people parking there and then they're interfering with pump station or public works or something. And, and now we have people parking and wanting to admire it. I mean, it's going to, it's an amazing thing. And I would certainly wanna go up to it and touch it or whatever, whatever the, you know, whatever is allowed. But, you know, with what looks like two parking spaces, you know? And then, you know, there's guardrail there. I don't know. Is there a sidewalk that goes on the south side of the pump station? It looks like there's a, I don't know what it is.
Not the south side, on the east side. East side.
There, I mean, that looks like a trap. It looks like a sidewalk. I don't know. It's just, anyway. Okay, thanks.
Other questions?
I got.
Go ahead.
It's also for staff.
Oh, Jeannie.
I saw a number, $3,900. Never said where that's coming from.
Yes.
Good question. That's coming from our park improvement funds. Right now, we don't have a line on them for art in public spaces. That'll change next year, so it's designated. But we do have quite some funding in park improvements.
Unlike the last item, which was donation of, of which you were accepting, this is a contract, you're purchasing art. So it's obviously not a lot of money, but we'll need to make this subject to execution of our standard contract and waiver of VARA rights, that kind of thing.
So the questions I would have then, brought that up, is the public arts committee's involvement. So as Nikki walked away. So you could speak for her if you'd like, save her a trip. But, but since it is art, you know, I'm, I'm sensitive to, you know, that everything's coordinated. And that's what I, was my question. Where, where is the committee involved in this? And are you approving, recommending?
This was also covered in that joint meeting that we had. And we gave it preliminary approval for the same reasons that we thought it was a, a good addition to our public art inventory.
Is there hesitation anywhere preliminary versus not seeing the final product, of course? Is that the only reason to be preliminary approval? Or there was no hesitancy on the committee's part?
No, there was no hesitancy on our part. That we, we felt that the decoration of the, of the stump would be an improvement over the existing stump. And, and Mr. Lukinich, Lukinich? Lukinich has, has so much experience. And I think we've all seen his work driving to Portland, back and forth. And I have every confidence that it's, it's going to be something that we'll be happy to see as we drive by. I'd also like to touch upon Counselor Hoagland's discussion of whether or not a piece of art needs to have parking in front of it in order to be appreciated. I would say that in, in the world of public art, there are a lot of things in roundabouts. There are a lot of pieces that were, are, are not meant to be approached. And this could be one of those.
Thank you.
That was my question.
Okay. Sorry. Other questions? For staff or the artists or parks? We know where the money's coming from. Parks and Rec obviously is getting in the art business and, you know, ignoring our parks, you know, of development, you know? But for a year, anyway.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I've got one more for you. You said you'd check it and touch it up every couple of years. For how long?
You know, I'm here for, my wife is not gonna move, so we're here. So I touch up Tigard's. I touch up, you know, I'm pretty on top of it.
Indefinitely.
So, and we were a little afraid 'cause the, the piece I did in, actually I did probably 10 pieces in the park in Tigard of vandalism. But the, and it's right next to the high school. Nobody's done a thing to that in two years. So we were really surprised. But they know I made friends with all of them. They'll call me, I'll come down, do a little sand and re-varnish it. So I'll definitely keep an eye on it. And the thing will be 100 years from now. It'll still be standing there once, you know, if, if it's taken care of.
Great, all right. Any other questions? So entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor? Move to approve the chainsaw sculpture, wildlife theme, to be located at the stump on West Devil's Lake Road next to the pump station.
One second. Can we make that subject to execution of the contract?
Yes, subject to execution of the contract.
And there's a motion to approve with a second from Counselor Mark? Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Kuz?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. When do you get started?
Soon as you guys want me to.
It's sunny all week.
Actually, I'm doing a couple of big projects.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's what, that's all.
Time after next week.
That's what everybody on the coast says. Tomorrow, tomorrow.
About a small house, so 700 square feet.
Okay. All right. All right, thank you. All right, we're, city manager and city attorney reports.
Nothing today.
Nothing?
Want me to give you some just reminder?
No, we're working on it.
Monday, you have a work meeting.
Nothing, all right. How about any last opportunities from citizens present for a comment? Seeing, come on forward. Please. But just can't pick you up on the mics, so.
For this guy over here.
Need your.
My name is Grant Melton. And I'm here to possibly ask questions or advocate for a mountain biking area in Lincoln City.
Go ahead.
It is to my knowledge that we have all of these walking parks and hiking areas. But as you come up on the open space areas, there are no bicycles allowed. And I was born and raised here, lived here for a long time. And there's never been any mountain biking. It's all hiking trails. And so if a mountain biker comes to Lincoln City area, they have nowhere to ride their bike. And what I would like is to propose maybe a mountain biking area or a set group of trails where there's a mountain biking trail network. As for now, if there are mountain bikers interested in coming to this area, maybe they come to this area, you know, but they, they don't get to ride their bikes. So the closest place that we have to ride a bike is a private land up by the college in Newport. And, you know, as for a citizen of a community, you know, if you wanna ride your bike up there, you have to get online and get a permit to ride up there 'cause it's private property. So it's not Newport's land or something. I know that Newport is in the works of doing another trail network within their city. And there are other mountain biker advocates and trail builders, associations, groups, people in other areas. And they have trail networks and they work with their communities and their fellow mountain bikers. And they get donations and they have trail party, build parties. And they build trails and people come from all over the world to ride their trails. Telemack has a large trail network that's gonna be opening this summer. Supposedly this spring, maybe sometime. And they've been working diligently to make that happen.
Let me, let me help you.
Yes.
We have various, at times, various different groups come before, much as you have with promoting one idea or another, which are usually good ideas. What we ask them to do is to, one, meet with the appropriate department. In this case would be Parks and Rec.
So Jeannie Sprague back here?
Right here. 'Cause she has, you know, as you can tell, a variety of budgets and land and different things. But I'll, let me put some parameters on it for you. One, generally, we're not gonna ask her to do the work. She'll assist. But we've had folks come and want dog parks. We've had folks come and want disc golf, come and want rotary, trail cars, and now mountain bikes. What we usually say is get a group together and meet with appropriate staff and come up with a plan. 'Cause fortunately, we do have some land that would be very appropriate for perhaps mountain biking. And with some, you know, donations from citizens and groups that wanna do that could make something really attractive and, and go. But the idea is to find a group that's gonna get behind it and lead it and stay with it for a while.
There are lots of trail building groups out there. I mean, I know quite a bit of them. My whole thing was proposing it to you. Is it, you know, something that you're interested in? It's not something that I'm gonna put time and energy in just to be turned down? in the long run, you know? Because honestly, building a trail is not really that hard, so it's more so about the permission to, you know?
So, yeah, if you'd get with, you know, Jeannie?
Yes.
And go, because then, much like these other things, then the committee comes forward too, wants more than just an idea and, and kind of step along the way, and that's how we prevent you from going too far with...
Well, yeah. I just noticed that, you know, the open space, where I grew up in Cutler City, there's an open space down there.
Let me, let me help you stop right there. Your open spaces are very limited to what you can do with it. Unfortunately, we have, we have land that isn't open space, but is recreational.
I just want to be clear that those open spaces are all no bicycles allowed, right?
Correct.
Okay.
That's part of the...
There's signs posted at the one, but then, as time goes on, I noticed a while back, the one on Bard Road, which has gotten larger over time, had a no bicycles sign posted a long time ago, but it doesn't now. So now you have people that go to these areas and might not necessarily know unless they know or they find out, but there's missing signs and...
That's good to know.
So you don't, we don't know.
Yeah.
There's another open space by Taft High School, you know, it's a nice area, but there's no signs posted that says any, anything at all. It's just an open space. And it says that it's open to the community, but it doesn't say what for.
Yeah.
So our thing is, when we, when we went there, and we don't see a no bicycle sign, there's nothing that tells us we can't ride a bike, and then we ride a bike, and then you get somebody with a dog, and then, and then the dog, and then the person, and, well, we, we just don't want any problems.
And I hear, then you'd be going to the right space.
The dog was nice, it's just that, you know, it ended up being a ordeal.
Yeah.
So I appreciate that. I will get ahold of Jeannie Sprague.
Thanks, do. And thanks for coming forward, because always interested in, in ideas.
Right. Well, I just had to, I had to ask, you know? And as for the parking there, you know, down there by the, where the chainsaw carving is going to be, just to make you aware that there is, there is overflow parking for Blue Heron Landing, right, across the street and down the way, and there is a, it's not like a sidewalk that has a light or anything, but there is sidewalk lines on the ground that go towards the trailer park there from Blue Heron Landing in that area and travel up the way. So within slight, you know, area, there is some overflow parking and somewhere for other people to park instead of clogging up the road.
We'll get it. He doesn't, he doesn't, he doesn't get out much. We want to get...
As they're driving by, oh, I'll park over here in this gravel, and I'll walk up there. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming forward.
Hey, that's all right.
All right. Anybody else have a comment with that? Counselor, Diane, anything good for the order?
I have one teeny question.
Question?
Yeah, teeny question, of you, actually. I was asked by some community members, and it was mentioned earlier about the state of the city address. It usually is in January.
No, but usually in the first part of the first quarter.
Oh, okay, so are you going to mystify us soon, or?
Well, as you heard from the chamber, they have moved to, invited me on March 31st to do an update, not the state of the city. We've chosen to make a move and be coordinated with the city's fiscal year ends in June, as you understand the budget and what our activities usually play with the budget. So our fiscal year of the city is June 30th. So after June 30th will be the state of the city, and I think they have it scheduled for September.
So this is chosen by the Chamber of Commerce?
Right.
To give the city...
Advice, advice from the mayor. Advice from the mayor to be consistent with a state of the city's update. So they're getting an update in March and then a state of the city at the end of the fiscal year.
And then, will that be what we do in the future, or?
It would be up to he, he or she who's talking, I would think, as in this case.
Okay, that's just a question that came up.
Yeah. Since there's nothing in charter, I mean, it's a courtesy, but it just seems, quite frankly, to be much more logical and consistent with, we make priorities based on a calendar, on a fiscal year. We do budgets, we do work. As we've already seen from our updates and everything else, things get pushed all over the place, so it just seemed to be more consistent to have a recap at the end of a fiscal year.
Okay.
So that's what's going to happen this year, and we'll see how it works. That way, you get me twice, kinda. But good question, thank you, because people are asking. Other questions or comments?
Question. Notice that we are seeing a lot of murals on our buildings, which I love. I was just wondering if we have a process, or we permit those in any way? And if not, can we?
They are not prohibited under our current sign ordinances. I don't remember off the top of my head as far as a permitting process. I will let you know on that. I'll check to be certain on it.
All right, thank you.
I think at some point, they, if they turn into advertising, that then would be advertising with the mural itself.
Correct.
And I think, I'm looking at the city attorney, but I would think, again, we'd get in that area of trying to regulate by content would be an issue.
I believe we have an exemption for art, artworks, so I think as long as they're, it's an original work of art, we're okay. The thing that I don't remember, Mr. Mayor, is if you have to have a permit for that, but the statement on the exemption for original artwork is correct. I just don't remember if there's a process for permitting that, or if they, people are just able to do that.
Where I'm coming from, as I know, there's several cities that do. I can think of Portland out of mind. I just, we're going through design standards and stuff, so I figured that would be a good time.
That's a good point to have. Maybe, you know, if there is a permit process, that would have some kind of a site review or design standard.
I, I know that Ann Marie brought it up recently, so they're still hashing it out.
Good.
Both being talked about.
Yep. Thanks for bringing it up. Counselor Hinton?
I'm just interested in a follow-up about the Logan Road transfer. City manager, do you have any, do you have a big check in your pocket?
I don't.
No!
I don't. I'm actually, we have our monthly city manager's lunch tomorrow, and that is on the agenda to ask, where are we? We did speak with Commissioner Jacobson late last week and, and asked her about it, and she said she would get with her staff to make sure that it gets processed, and so I can let you know tomorrow at about 2:00.
Okay. Have a nice lunch.
You're not expecting trucks to show up for any kind of work or anything the next day, are you? Oh, okay.
I'm just following the process.
Okay. Counselor Mark?
I have nothing.
Counselor Holt? Great. I have just a few dates to remind people of. We have a work session Monday, the 16th. If you recall, it's in the morning, and it, this is on the Sustainability Committee Recommendations, so make sure it's on your calendar. On the 18th, which is Wednesday of next week, is the Parks Open House at the Community Center on the newly named Southeast Third and Keel Park. On the 20th, Friday, is Coffee with the Mayor, and at noon is an open house with the, some, some people may be interested, noon to 2:00, open house with behavioral health at the DMV. New services through the county, and you may want to stop in and, and check it out. Then on the 21st, Saturday, is the North Fire Station. Up by IGA is, got an open house from 11:00 to 3:00, so you might want to see what your tax dollars have paid for. And, let's see, I also shared with Parks Director Jeannie Sprague this afternoon that I had the ability to visit with Dr. Gray from the Lincoln County School District on Saturday, and she informed me that we now have a DEQ clearance letter on the Taft old school property. So they are anxious, anxious to exchange title for check. And so I told them when we saw the actual certificate, we'd think about it. But that's been a long time coming, and so she was excited, we're excited, so we can get moving on that part, so. With that, let's call it a night.